Formed, they get to spread out a little bit. Get to spread out a little bit.
Yes.[13.83][13.83](laughing).[14.83][14.83](applause).
Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 20th, 2016. We would like to apologize for the delay in starting the meeting. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Reyes, Counselor DePena.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Present.
Counselor Abdu, Counselor Ortiz, Counselor Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez, Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Present.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Present. Counselors, before I ask for a moment of silence, please note that Counselor Zella Reyes, Counselor Dave Abdu, as well as Counselor Mayor Ochois all excuse themselves due to prior commitment. Counselor Niuka Alvarez Rodriguez had a family emergency and she's on her way to New York. There was a death in her family. So now, as we take a moment of silence, please keep her and her family in our prayers. Please stand for a moment of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Legions.
(inaudible) United States of America, and three hundred and forty states and stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Can I please get a motion to approve minutes from November 15th and December 6th?
So moved.
Mr. Clerk, clarify. So, the agenda reads, December 6th, 2015. It's December 6th, 2016.
Yes, type it. That's a typo.
Yes. So, motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now moving on to public participation. Please remember that you will have two and a half minutes to speak. Please address the city council as a whole, not any individual city councilor. When you hear the first bell, that means that you have two minutes. By the second bell, your time is up. Mr. H. Malley, name an address for the record, please.
H. Malley, 53 Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. The last meeting of the year 2016. We, the citizens, are united to support our police department and the respectable union. Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job. We, the citizens, demand of you and Mayor Rivera to support our police officers and seniors officers' union. Our city is a better city because of hard-working DPDW workers. Lawrence Public School, under impeccable leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh, has become the best public school in our nation. Teachers and their union must know eighty-three thousand citizens are behind them. Mayor Rivera, because of the lead Paulino, has not fulfilled his campaign promise, creating safe Lawrence. This membered body of Valerio Paulino create the biggest crisis of Mayor Rivera administration. Since for two weeks after disappearance of the lead Valerio Paulino, Mayor Rivera does not admit to Paulino, mother and family, his failure. Mayor Rivera give mismanaged water department eighteen million dollars, but the police department with a budget of only twelve million dollars to support and protect our citizen. Mayor Rivera, because of bloody dismembered body of Paulino, need to resign immediately. We demand of you-
Mr. Malley, please remember to keep your comments as a whole, not in the individual person.
Okay. We demand of you, as our elected official, to provide our public safety and support of public Paulino ordinance. In the end of this year, Lawrence has been discredited as the most violent city in our nation. We demand of you, as our elected official and mayor of the city, to support and protect, create safe zone for our citizen. We need to change the administration and our approach to a public safety. Our city cannot be as a city of immigrant, cannot be example of the unsafe city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. Next person is Deanna Cruz. Name an address for the record, please.
Greetings, councilors. My name is Deanna Cruz. I am the Director of Substance Abuse Prevention and Education Services at the Lawrence Smithfield Community Coalition. I'm here tonight to speak with you and give you information about the importance of applying for funding for the Lawrence Police Department to carry Narcan. As you know, we are in the midst of an opiate epidemic, especially here in Lawrence, Massachusetts. Every day in the U.S., more than six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand opioid prescriptions are dispensed. Thirty-nine-hundred people initiate non-medical use of prescription opioids. Five-hundred-and-eighty people initiate heroin use, and seventy-eight people die from opioid-related overdoses. More shocking is that DPH has estimated that one-hundred-and-seventy-six Massachusetts residents died from opiate overdose in September 2016 alone. We have a significant problem here in Massachusetts, especially in Lawrence. In quarters one and two, the EMS reports for the state, which are projected and are low because of that, place opiate-related calls at nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-four for just the first half of the year. Most of these involve the administration of Narcan at least once, but maybe more than once. This is an eighteen percent increase from 2015. Some people think that an alternative to administering Narcan prior to a first responder arriving is using the bag-valve mask for rescue breathing. This is sufficient for life-sustaining activity while awaiting for paramedics, but it does nothing to reverse the actual overdose, what is happening at the level of the brain. So it's very important that Narcan is present. What happens when an opiate binds to the opiate receptors? It continues to slow down the process of all the organs in the body, slowing down to the point of ceasing their function. So although you may be respirating for the person, their body will continue to shut down to the point of death. Narcan is not harmful to individuals. You can administer Narcan, and if the person's not having an overdose, nothing will happen to them. Anybody can have Narcan, there will be no harm come to them. The American Heart Association has adapted it into their practice for CPR protocols. I've left you all with a packet of information that has data on the CPR practices, as well as local data. And if you'd like any more information on it, my contact information is there. I'd be happy to meet with you individually or as a group. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person is Mr. Rich Russell.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Dick Russell. I reside 34 Cross Street in the city. Several issues regarding the Lawrence Police Department. On December 14th, starting at 6:45 PM, the following events transpired. First, a call for gunshots in an apartment on Alston Street. Then, just prior to 7:00 PM, a call for a missing autistic sixteen-year-old. Then, a call for a fifteen-year-old running amok with a knife in his family's apartment on Hobson Street. And finally, calls of gunfire down on Foster Street, where shell casings were found. Meanwhile, the search for the autistic child covered an area spreading from Prospect Street to Lawrence Street, from Swan Street to Havrell Street. The bottom line from all four of these events was, no bodies were found, no injuries were reported, and more importantly, a missing sixteen-year-old was found. All of this occurred by 7:30 in a forty-five-minute period of time. The reason I mention this is that some of our elected officials are quick to badmouth police leadership when something bad happens, and very slow to offer a job well-done. Were your complaints towards the Essex County DA's office regarding the Paulino case? Would releasing the time of the death have hindered the court case? It might have taken some of the onus off of our police chief. Or am I being cynical and wondering if this is a political grandstanding operation? Lastly, I attended the swearing-in and promotion ceremony for the Lawrence Fire Department last Sunday. I asked this question as an unofficial online or bunsman for Lawrence residents. Several people have asked, how out of a list of forty-four people, two new firefighters have relatives on the department, and the third individual has a relative that is the head of the city's Human Resource Department. One relative was number eight on the list. I got no issue with that. The second relative's name wasn't found on the list, and the third individual, who has a daddy in high places, was thirty-sixth out of forty-four on that list. Who is the bottom line in the hiring authority? Would I be considered cynical if I wished everyone a Merry Christmas? Merry Christmas anyways. I am hesitant to wish everyone a Happy New Year, as this is Lawrence and next year officially starts election season. As always, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Next person is Eugenio Alejandro Chong.
To the people of the city hall, people of the Lawrence High School, Lawrence Public School, Lawrence High School campus, people of the Lawrence Senior Center, people of the churches, people of Lawrence, people of Massachusetts, and people of the United States. My name is Eugenio Alejandro Chong. I'm elderly, seventy-two years old. I don't retire yet. I worked very hard for the Lawrence Public School, more than less twenty-nine years, especially for the old Lawrence High School campus, Lawrence High School campus. The Constitution law in my contract of the United States protect and defend my legal rights. I inform, report to all of you. Debo, liar, abusing, corrupt, and Marie Stone, she's a parrot officer, the central office of the Lawrence Public School, study the change in connection. She can verify and support, Debo, troublemaker, liar, abusing, corrupt, Juan Rodriguez, former assistant headmaster, now he's the principal to a school of the Lawrence High School campus. She study the problem against me. She retaliate me because I defend and protect my legal rights. They send false information to the superintendent to fire me. Every year, I receive letter of reemployment and work in the same position job. Debo, liar, abuse, corrupt, and Marie Stone, and Debo, troublemaker, liar, abuse, corrupt, Juan Rodriguez, said everything before the last day of work for everybody, or end of the last semester, 2015, 2016. Debo and Marie Stone gave me a letter of the superintendent, intend to dismiss or fire me on June 16th. They said everything until I received the letter of superintendent, dismiss or fire me on October 7th. Certain hand deliver security officer, Debo, liar, abuse, corrupt, and Marie Stone, she's a parrot officer, and Debo, troublemaker, abusing, corrupt, Juan Rodriguez, principal to a school, have to be fired from Lawrence Public School, Lawrence High School campus for every, ever, and no worrying Lawrence too. They damaged my reputation too. Another deal connection, the secretary of the superintendent, Maria Cruz, I heard for a meeting with the superintendent, she told me, no meeting with him. I heard who authorized, she didn't answer. I told her a question the superintendent authorized it, she refused to answer to me. Talk to me through the union. I went to the part of school secretary, told me I has only five minutes. I asked the president of the union, para professional Luangmame, to make a meeting with superintendent. She called central office in Debo, and Marie Stone told her, no meeting with him. Luanganado told me a lot, told me a lot. I has a little time to do her. She intimidate me and told me I have to leave, or I call security. She told me, this is another chain deal connection, the union, para professional. Luanganado, president of the union, representative, Erin Blanchett.
Thank you, Mr. Chong.
Thank you.
Next person is Kendris Vasquez.
Do we still have a floor, Mr. Clerk? I'll speak from here.[853.82][853.82](laughing). No. So, good evening. Once again, my name is Kendris Vasquez. I'm the city council president. I'm here to actually wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a very prosperous 2017. This is a very difficult time for the city of Lawrence, but at the same time, I think that it is important that we all come united and understand that we are able to accomplish a lot together by doing so. Counselors, I understand that the work that we do, it is a very challenging one. I appreciate and I, you know, thank you for actually coming here and putting out your best face every single day, especially in moments of difficulty. To the mayor and the administration and all of our city employees, thank you very much for the great dedication that you offer to the city of Lawrence to ensure that we are able to move forward on a daily basis. To our staff, thank you very much for the work that you do daily as well. I appreciate it, and I wish all of the city residents, I wish everyone sitting in this table, everyone in the audience, the mayor, his family, a very merry, a Merry Christmas and a very, very happy and prosperous 2017. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I am submitting those names for the record.
Sir.
Moving on with the agenda, public hearings, we have none. Communications from the mayor, city officials, and the city attorney, document 43116, year-end safety police report, placed on the agenda by myself and counselor from Tower Hill, Counselor Rodriguez. This is going to be Public Safety Committee. This is in regards to the city charter, you could find it in ordinance, but you could find it in section 10.08.060. It is mandated that we receive a annual safety report from the police department. Next document is document 41816, appropriations orders and resolution, appropriation transfer from capital reserve fund to boiler replacement and repairs. Mr. Vice President and Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Council President. The Budget and Finance Committee voted with unanimous vote to send this document up with a favorable recommendation. This is an appropriation transfer, as you said, from capital reserve fund for boiler replacement repairs at City Hall, boiler replacement at the schools, assistance for fencing at the Tomirello site, for a total of four-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred dollars and sixty-three cents. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on with the agenda, committee reports, Budget and Finance Committee, document 40816. Mr. Vice President.
The housing, I'm sorry, the Budget and Finance Committee sent this document up without a recommendation. This is the Lawrence Police Department's first responder, the Lockson grant for thirty-five-thousand dollars. I send this as a committee report.
Counselors, do you make that informal motion?
Motion is a committee report.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Counselors, before we move on with a motion on this document, can we please have a motion to reconsider document 41816? In order for the appropriation transfer to be approved, we need six votes. Can I please get a motion to reconsider?
So moved.
Second.
Can we consider?
Because the motion did not pass. So the document-
We need six votes.
We need six votes. So the document failed.
Because it needed six votes.
Correct.
Then why can we, why are we going to reconsider if we only five?
Hopefully, we'll table it.
To reconsider, we table it until the following-
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, so it has been, the motion has been made and it has been properly second.
It's there.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Counselors, can I please get a motion to table document 41816?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. So, document 41816, the appropriation transfer, we need six votes in order to approve. We voted unanimously, but there's only five members in the city council. As a result, the item actually failed. If we had not reconsidered the motion immediately, what would have happened is that this document, the funds could not have been utilized, the transfer didn't go through. So what we decided to do is reconsider the vote. We table it to keep it here until we have sufficient members to see whether or not a decision could be made in the future. Okay? Thank you. So we have document 408. Is there a motion?
Is there a motion to reconsider the vote?
No.
No.
So this one will be either to approve or deny, or to table.
Motion to table.
Motion to table document 40816 has been made and properly second. All those in favor to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
This is 41816, correct?
40816.
Who made that? Okay.
So, that was the vote to reconsider, right?
No, that's the confusion.
Table.
That was not the vote to reconsider.
Okay, 41816, I'm sorry, I just got ahead of myself. 41816, yes, motion to table, yes. Yeah. So we have a motion to table on 408. I voted no for that.
Oh, I got you.
I'm not sure that's the author of what he wanted to do, frankly.
Okay, that's fine. But I mean, it was, motion to table was no.
Yeah, so let's retract a little bit. So we, so let me explain what just happened.
I'm sorry, just an explanation. Are we going back to 408?
Yes.
Okay.
So the motion now is to table 40816. So-
Can I ask, who's the first on that motion?
Counselor Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Maldonado.
Maldonado, got it.
So, all in favor to table 40816, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Reyes, Counselor DePena.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Abdu noted, Counselor Ortiz noted, Counselor Maldonado.
Yes.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez, Counselor Vice President LaPlante.
Motion no to table.
No, and Counsel President.
No to table.
One, two, three, in favor, two, no.
Motion fails.
Motion to table fails.
Motion fails. Counselors, is any, any other motions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Counsel Vice President Mark LaPlante.
So this is the first responder in the Lockson grant, otherwise known as Narcan. I learned an awful lot since I first learned about this issue, which is about over a year or two ago. We have learned a lot about opioids, how it's impacted our city, how it's impacted our state, how it's impacted our country. This is a very hot topic because we're starting to see some real tragedies taking place throughout our country, our state, and our city. And up until tonight, I wasn't aware of the numbers as they relate to our city. I first came upon this with mixed emotions, to be candid, Council President. We already have a drug problem in this city, was my impression early on. And I was concerned that if we were to allow drug activities to be taking place easier, if we were to allow this Narcan, which does not, which essentially resuscitates somebody, if I understand it correctly, that would, I was concerned that would be enabling or having more of a problem. We had more people coming into our city thinking that not only can they buy the drugs, they can use the drugs, and they can overdose the drugs without fear, because we would have a whole apparatus here to make sure that if they did fall into a place where they would overdose, that there would be a safety net, and that would be the Narcan. We could go on, we could spend an entire meeting on opioids, Council President, and I hope, and after we have a vote on this, I'll be making a motion that we add something to the council agenda that will allow us to have that full discussion. Is it on there?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at those.
So, I'll make the motion later. But in a nutshell, Narcan in and of itself, it's not the silver bullet. It is a tool, it is a piece, it is, it is something that's going to deal with, with the issue. But also, we need to deal with law enforcement. We can't out-Narcan the opioid problem, we can't out-arrest the opioid problem, we cannot out-police the opioid problem. Treatment alone is not going to be enough. Education by itself is not enough. All these factors in the whole is what's going to help us eventually get past this. And frankly, we as a city are not the only municipality, again, in the Commonwealth or in our country that are facing these kinds of issues. Recently, in the last two years, if you just do a Google search on Gloucester, you'll see how they're on the front lines with their police chief at that time, dealing with things in a very, I would say controversial, out-of-the-box kind of way. And so different communities are handling it differently and trying different ways to deal with it. So, but what we do know, I think, at this point is that, is that this Narcan is a tool. It's already being used by Lawrence General Hospital, it's already being dispensed at our clinics. This is what we learned at the Budget and Finance Committee hearing. So it's already out there, and what this grant will do is it'll allow the first responders, namely, the police department and the fire department, to have both the training, the materials, and actually have that. I was prepared tonight to, to vote in favor of this, and after having, if anybody's on Council President, you're on Facebook, I'm sure some of the members are as well, really, I thought, for the most part, a very respectful discussion, pros and cons about this measure. And I was very heartened to see that discussion on my page, in that it gave me an opportunity to see things a little more fully, a little more in-depth, and it makes me stronger in knowledge. And so I was prepared to do that, but what I think cements this, to me anyway, is what I received tonight from the Lawrence Smithfield Community Coalition, LMCC, most specifically Deanna Cruz. And I just want to throw these, and we all have these, by the way, at our desk, Counsel President, but it just strikes me, and I just want to read some of these facts, because I've been searching for these facts for a long time, and I finally got them tonight. So 2015, this is based, this is from the LMCC, based on the Massachusetts opioid overdose death certificate data, there were forty-seven confirmed opioid-related deaths in our city. Twenty-three people were Laurentians, were from our city, that died in our city. Three were from Lawrence that died elsewhere. Twenty-one died in Lawrence but lived elsewhere, and fourteen of those died at Lawrence General Hospital. And in our sheet here, the occupations for these are quite, it really doesn't run the gamut. I'll pull a few out, obviously, and not obviously, but student, a hairdresser, a physical therapist, a carpenter, auto salesman, a fisherman, a couple people who are unemployed, a plumber, a cab driver, painter, a salesman. These are individuals who had various jobs and occupations that died from this. And the numbers for 2015 are not necessarily closed, because there are thirteen pending opioid-related deaths as well that need confirmation. But as I understand this correctly, we're looking at maybe seven from Lawrence who died in Lawrence, and six from other communities that, that died in our city. The other, I think, big piece of information that, to me, this is like a newsflash, both of these pieces, and I want to thank the LMCC for this, by the way, Council President, is the number of occurrences through a twelve-month period spanning 2014, 2015. And it looks like this in our packet, Council President. It is, it's rather shocking. This, and I, but I don't know if there's, I'll give you the number, but what I don't know from this is, are there repeat offenders, right? So, the number of times that Narcan was administered to individuals in Lawrence General Hospital, I'm looking to make sure I'm reading that correctly, LGH, was two-hundred-and-seventy-seven times. So these are, in the bulk of those, were people from our city. Out of the two-hundred-and-seventy-seven, one-hundred-and-ninety-seven cases or occurrences were from people from Lawrence. I'll repeat. Out of the two-hundred-and-seventy-seven times that Narcan was administered in our city, one-hundred-and-ninety-seven times that was administered to someone from Lawrence. But I don't know if these are one person that maybe got it five times or six times over the course of year. I don't know if that number reflects that, but nevertheless, that's a big number. But what's even more telling is where the individuals are from. They're from all over Massachusetts, all over New Hampshire, Florida, Maine, and New Jersey. Now, some of these, as I've been told, they could be in halfway houses, for example, they may be in treatment, for example. They may not just people driving in, doing the drugs, overdosing, and then receiving Narcan. That may not necessarily be the case. It might be, it might not be. The stats don't, don't reveal that. But, but once again, I think we need to understand these facts, these details, as we go through this. I don't want to take a lot of time out, because I do think we need to spend an entire meeting on this. I do think we need to bring police, people for the, LMCC folks who are in this, we need to bring the fire department, we need to bring the Lawrence General Hospital folks, we need state officials, any kind of treatment houses. We need to figure out what's going and what's our best thing, because while I'm voting for this- We need to figure out what's going and what's our best thing, because, uh, while I'm voting for this tonight, I don't vote for it tonight with, uh, with the rose-colored glasses, I know this is not going to solve our problem. All it does is give police and fire, if I understand this correctly, I'm looking to the back of the room for our Police Department to make sure this is accurate. It's Fire Department, two, three, Mr. President, I want to make sure that's accurate. It's not just the Police Department, or just the police, maybe it's just the police.
Ms. Wall.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Wall, will you mind coming to the mic?
So the question I just asked, uh, an official from the Police Department, Ms. Amanda Wall, was whether or not this is going to the Police and Fire, to the Police, and Ms. Wall has said, and you can say it, it's for.
It's, it's for just the Police Department, not the Fire Department.
Okay. Um, I received a couple of private messages as well, from a couple of members from the Police Department. I'm not going to give you their names, uh, but they said how helpless they felt when they saw individuals that they, um, that they saw that were overdosing, and they did not have the equipment on them. And that, to me, was rather, um, uh, was, uh, was very moving to me, it moved the needle with me, anyway. So, uh, it's not for the Fire Department, I'll, I'll take that back, but it's for the Police Department. So, that's it, Mr. Counsel President. And when this discussion is over, I'd like to make a motion to put something on the agenda as well for the next city council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, Counsel Maldonado.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, I strongly believe that if we can save one life, and this program can save one single life, then we will have accomplished something very important. I'm going to vote in favor, but I need some clarification. Uh, the reason why it was table, I, if I misunderstood, was because we didn't have enough, we didn't have six votes.
That's for document, that was for document four eighteen sixteen.
That was the document.
Uh, for the appropriation transfer.
Oh, okay, so this document was not voted down at the last time, am I correct?
No.
Okay, so we haven't voted?
We voted, uh, to approve the committee report.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so definitely, um, again, if we can save one life, I think we, we would have accomplished something. And the fact of the matter is that the drug problem is not going to go away, uh, by rejecting this program. Uh, and if we place this medication in the hands of the police and the Fire Department, I think that it's going to be a benefit, uh, to our citizens and those who are less fortunate, those who are under the influence of drugs, uh, and a lot of those individuals probably have become addicted to drugs because of prescriptions that our system, our system got them into. So definitely, I, I definitely will support this project.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Counsel President, I'd like to make a motion before we get to that point. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to put on the next city council agenda, I hope we can make this unanimous, to, uh, to put on there a document, uh, that deals with the comprehensive discussion and review of Lawrence's, um, of Lawrence's dealings, uh, with opioid, the opioid epidemic in our city.
Counsel Vice President, uh, we'll have to make a decision on the motion that we have now, because it supersedes, uh, that one.
Fine.
So, uh, so, when, when we vote on this, we'll take that.
I'll take the floor afterwards, thank you.
So, um, any further discussion, seeing there's none, all those in favor to approve four oh eight sixteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, Mr. Vice President.
Counsel President, with your indulgence, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to put on the next city council agenda, uh, the, the item entitled, uh, uh, overview of the opioid, uh, epidemic in the city of Lawrence, and invite to, uh, a city council meeting to be determined, possibly committee on the whole, um, the Lawrence Police, Lawrence Fire, Lawrence General Hospital officials, the, um, LMCC, um, there may be a, um, representative from the pharmaceutical company, there is a trade association of the pharmaceutical company that might be worthy of reaching out to, that might be able to provide some information, and I'm not sure if I'm missing anybody on this one.
I second the motion.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, moving on with the agenda, document four ten sixteen, Lawrence, uh, Mr. Vice President, and Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Yeah, thank you, give me a second.
Four ten sixteen.
Thank you. Uh, the Budget and Finance Committee voted with unanimous recommendation to send this document up. FY two thousand sixteen, Edwin Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for seventy-one thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. They make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Properly second, any discussion?
Just asking this real quick, this is to upgrade the department's police cruisers, cruiser radios.
Okay, any further discussions, seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document four twenty sixteen, Mr. Vice President and Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Budget and Finance Committee voted with unanimous vote to send this up to the council with a favorable recommendation. This is, uh, to fund, uh, for bulletproof vests, uh, the sum is, uh, twenty, for twenty-two thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Um, and it has actually a state matching grant as well for the same amount. So the total that we're going to receive, that we're accepting as part of the grant, is forty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, and they make that in the form of a motion.
Second. Motion has been made, I'm properly second, any discussion?
Uh, real quick, this is to provide, uh, replace bulletproof vests that have been in existence now that they're over five years old.
Okay, any further discussion, seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document four twenty-four sixteen, Mr. Vice President.
The Budget and Finance Committee voted by unanimous vote to send this document up with a favorable recommendation. Uh, this is the FY two thousand seventeen Support and Incentive Grant for two hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars. And they make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Properly second, any discussion?
Real quick, discussion.
Mr. Vice President.
Uh, this is for the emergency nine-one-eleven telecommunications, uh, equipment and some personnel costs. This is constantly be re, uh, needs to constantly be revamped over the course of time, so, uh, they're slowly taking it to piece by piece, and this is what that money's being spent on.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Um, committee of the whole, we have no report, housing committee reports, document three oh seven sixteen. Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Yeah, the Housing Committee, uh, voted unanimously with a favorable recommendation to approve, uh, island three oh seven sixteen, which is the acceptance of the dip, uh, from the owner of the, uh, of one eighty-five, uh, Manchester Street, and, uh, we, uh, I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Motion has been made.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Um, moving on with the agenda, personal committee reports, none. Ordinance committee reports, none, withdrawals. Document forty-seven oh nine, can I please get a motion to withdraw?
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second. Uh, four oh seven oh nine is disposition, a Bradford Street tax map, one sixty-six, lot forty-one, placed on the agenda by Lisa St. Ange. Uh, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor to withdraw, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document one ninety oh nine, surplus property, three sixty-one, three sixty-five Lowell Street, tax map one eighty-seven, lot sixty-two. Can I please get a motion to withdraw?
Some move.
Second.
Motion has been made, properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document nine B fifteen, surplus declaration, Blakeney and Manchester Streets, tax map one ninety-four, lot twenty. Uh, can I please get a motion to withdraw?
Some move.
Second for discussion.
Uh, discussion, Counselor Maldonado.
Yes, uh, it, it's my understanding that this property was in negotiation with an abuser. Uh, can somebody tell me what happened, uh?
Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Through you, President, my Counsel President. Uh, the, the person that it was interested on the property wa, is no longer interested on that.
Okay.
So that's why we, uh, send it to the full council to, uh, for withdraw, because they're no longer interested.
But this is going to be, again, publicized for the, somebody else.
Eventually, well, yes.
Because my understanding also is that somebody diagonally across from, from that piece of land is interested.
Yes, that's, basically, the process is going to be that, uh, they're going to be, they're going to, uh, put it back to bid again.
Okay, good.
Or reconsider another, another person.
Great.
Yeah, the, the person originally interested, I also believe, moved out of the city, um, and sold the property, uh, next to it, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Um, any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Um, all business, acceptance of EEE eight grant to fund the Lawrence Rail Trail design on the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The contract is to be amended to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, placed on the agenda by Economic and Business, Business and Economic Development Director Abel Vargas. Uh, this is going back to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question regarding this matter? Uh, through you, I just want to get the time sensitivity with respect to this, I don't, okay, very good. I got my question answered, Counsel President.
Okay, wonderful, very good. Councilors, are there any table matters that you would like to take off the table at this point? Seeing there's none, moving on to new business. Uh, document four twenty-five sixteen, review of employee reprimand process, executive session anticipated. Um, I will assume that Counselor Maldonado wants this on, for the committee of the whole?
Yes, please.
Okay, going to the committee of the whole. Uh, document four twenty-six sixteen, review of police arrest of Lawrence firefighter, shooting injury incident of September sixth, two thousand sixteen, executive session anticipated, going to the community, committee on the whole. Uh, two, four twenty-seven sixteen, Parkland acquisition and renovation for communities, park program, resolution for phase one improvements to O'Connell Park South Common. It was placed on the agenda by Susan E. Fink, acting community development director. It's going to the, um, ordinance committee. Document four twenty-nine sixteen, Lawrence Police Department, Edward Barnes Memorial Justice Assistant Grant on the amount of one hundred thousand dollars is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document four thirty sixteen, dedication of intersection of Jefferson Street and Leeds Terrace in honor of Sergeant Roger A. Toomey, USAF, from nineteen fifty to nineteen fifty-four, placed on the agenda by our city attorney, is going to the ordinance committee. Document four thirty-two sixteen, traffic and safety study by Counsel President Vasquez and Counselor Rodriguez is going to the safe, Public Safety Committee.
Counsel President.
Um, Mr. Vice President.
I'd like to make a, a request that we make, uh, document four twenty-seven sixteen to the Budget and Finance Committee. It deals with a, uh, renovation grant for six hundred and ten thousand dollars for the South Common.
Okay.
Could we send that to the Budget and Finance Committee?
Budget and Finance, four twenty-seven sixteen is going to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Four twenty-seven?
Yes, sir.
I was thinking more like a housing.
We can send it to.
No, I'd rather not, if you don't mind, it just delays it.
Yeah. Cause I, I, I think this is an interesting document, because it touches upon different committees, so.
Send it to both.
Uh, let's do Budget and Finance, because housing specifically, I think, um.
Position of properties, it's not like it's position of property.
Yeah. Yeah, this is more, yeah, let's keep it in Budget and Finance for now. If necessary, we, we could resubmit it to, uh, housing, but I think Budget and Finance could deal with it at this point.
No problem.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, document four thirty-three sixteen, home rule petition relative to the disability retirement of firefighter Michael, Michael J. Armando, placed on the agenda by our city attorney, is going to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Uh, Ms., uh, Mr. President.
Yes.
Because it's a home rule petition, uh, it may require the ordinance committee to.
Yes.
The other, the other thing is that we should ask the city attorney, be, uh, I was reading, uh, the document that a company that was sent to us by Diane Coe, and, uh, and the implications concerns me. Uh, it might be a good idea that the city attorney will come down.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that he can explain to us exactly what are the implications if we go through this, and how it's going to affect the city in future and past, uh, retirees. So, I think, uh, we should send communication to the city attorney.
Yeah, I, this is a, uh, uh, yeah, an interesting document as well, because it involves, um, a lot of money from the city. So that's why I'm referring it specifically to Budget and Finance, because we will need a financial explanation, uh, for, for, to be able to fund this home rule petition if it were to be approved.
And, uh, and then it gotta be to order, it gotta be sent to order.
And ordinance will also need to act on it, so.
Exactly.
So there, there's a, I, let's send it to both, um, at this point, but I think ordinance might table it first, uh, to allow Budget and Finance to find out the, the financial portion of it. I think to be able to have a healthy discussion in ordinance, um, did that make sense? So to be able to have a, a, a healthy financial discussion and see whether or not the ordinance committee wants to make a recommendation for the home rule. Um, hopefully, I didn't confuse.
It seems to me that regardless of the money, uh, the implications can be very serious for the city of Lawrence, so regardless of the money, uh, and whatever the, the Budget and Finance Committee decides, uh, we, we have to, uh, the, the, the ordinance committee needs to.
Review.
Have a clear understanding of what this is going to do for us.
I think we could, since we do have some other items in the committee of the hall, um, it's something I wouldn't want to send there, but I think we could also have a, a discussion at that level.
Committee of the hall?
Yes, because it will, it will involve more than, it will involve more than one committee, and we could make the decision in, in that committee also.
Yeah, it, it could be.
Yeah, so I, let's send it to the committee of the hall. Uh, let's not put it in, in either ordinance or Budget and Finance, that way, uh, everyone will be synchronized in, in the discussion. Okay, councilors, um.
No budget, there's no, um, timing on that, right? Thirty days or anything?
Uh, so I don't have the vice chair for ordinance, um, housing.
The vice chair's not here, the chair's not here.
There's a lot of folks not here.
Can you go around first?
Your next, housing?
Uh, we do it every Monday, so it gotta be the twenty-sixth.
Next Monday?
I guess.
Are you serious? Monday? It's a state holiday.
Be consistent, I mean, it's a, it's a holiday.
It's a, it's a state holiday.
Only the day after Christmas.
So, you want to wait until after the New Year's?
Let's do it after New Year, yeah.
It's your call. Okay, so you want it, you, you'll notify the secretary for posting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Personal, Mr. Vice Chair.
I need to call another member.
Okay, so after, we'll, we'll inform you after next year. Mr. Vice President.
Uh, the eleventh, uh, for Budget and Finance, this is a Wednesday night.
January eleventh.
January eleventh, after the next meeting.
I'm on meeting this year.
What?
Oh, eleven, eleven, eleven.
Next year, um, committee on the whole.
There's only five of us here, uh, so, I can throw out a date, but who knows, there's going to be enough people to show up, uh. Uh, and how does the, uh.
That's opposition.
Just to, um, ah, Martin Luther King Day, um.
The fifth?
How about the thirtieth of January?
The thirtieth?
Mm-hmm, that's an odd week.
That's a month and a half.
Well, if you look at it, we have, we have Martin Luther King Day on the sixteenth, we have city council on the seventeenth, and we have, I mean.
How about, uh, on a Thursday, when the city council, when there's no subcommittee meetings, on the fifth?
Well, the problem is you get zoning and planning and all those other things that are going on as well.
We move them to another room. We, we take precedent here.
So what day are you looking?
Uh, maybe the, the fifth, is the fifth, uh, Thursday?
Thursday.
Cause the, the thirtieth is, I, I believe is too late.
So what I'm trying to do is, we have, we're trying to get some people from Lawrence General Hospital, uh, a pharmaceutical company, et cetera, to show up for this opioid discussion. I don't want to, we're in Christmas right now, Christmas time, and it's not a good time to be asking people to do it, so we need a little bit of time to breathe, so people get back from the holidays, and then schedule stuff. So the fifth is awfully fast, so I'm looking to push it down a little bit further.
Okay, I think that sounds, um, I won't be here on the nineteenth, but if the group wants to meet on the nineteenth, I'm, that's fine with me.
That would be fine with me, the nineteenth.
Yeah, I'm, I'm available on the nineteenth. You sure you don't want to be around for the fun?
I would love to be here, yeah, so let, we'll, we'll decide, I'll, I'll send a, a calendar invite for different members and see.
All right.
Available.
Mr. President, one matter regarding the, uh, committee as a whole.
Okay.
At the last meeting of the committee as a whole, uh, the chief of police was invited to attend to provide some explanation, uh, in regard to the actions of the police, uh, on a criminal, criminal matter, and he did not show up. And it is my understanding, I don't know how true that is or not, but it is my understanding that he was advised not to come. Okay, and that concerns me. Uh, I asked the city attorney to provide, uh, a rec. I asked the city attorney to provide a request for the Chief of Police to attend that would be served by a constable, just to make sure that we cover ourselves. And I, that document, I'm going to have the city attorney send it to each one of you, because I, I believe that we are in our right to request a department head to appear in front of the, of the Committee as a whole, and, and for a department head to refuse to attend is not right. So, I'm suggesting that we serve the request to attend by a constable. Okay?
Do you make that informal motion, or?
I make that informal motion.
Motion has been made. Second, any discussion?
Discussion, so I, I talked to the mayor right after that, and I said, listen, we could either do things by the constable all the time, or we get department heads here. I don't, I don't think, my discussions with him, I don't think, I don't believe there was any edict about not showing up, I believe there was a conflict by the police chief that evening. I really don't want to have us go down this road, that we have to serve a constable with the cost and timing, et cetera, if we don't have to. I'm going to ask my council colleagues' indulgence, let's try it one more time, and let's see what happens. If this doesn't happen, and there's no good reason, honestly, if there is a, we need to be reasonable, too. If there is a, if there is legitimate conflict, we have to have some room, but if there's no conflict, then I'm going to agree with my colleague that, that, that there's no place for this.
I agree with you that using a constable to require a city employee to show up is not the right way to do it, it's not, it shouldn't happen, we shouldn't have to do that. And I agree with you, and I'm definitely willing to withdraw the motion to give him a second chance.
Okay, motion has been...
So, I withdraw my motion.
Councilors, can I please get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Discussion, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all.
Happy Hanukkah, too.
Happy Hanukkah.
Hooray!
Public safety.